We're going to call the regular meeting of the Planning Commission for the Charter Township of Oxford to order, if I can speak here. And if we could all rise and give our respects to the flag, I'd appreciate it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for ever.
Thank you. Thank you. Susan, if you would please note the role.
It is noted, there's a full form.
Thank you. We have something we need to add to the agenda. So before we make approval to the agenda, we'd like to approve the agenda as amended to add for the resignation of Ashley Ross this evening, because I didn't get that put on here in time. So if we could have a motion to approve-
I'll make a motion to add item nine C for the resignation of Commissioner Ross, effective tomorrow.
May 27, '22?
Yes.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye?
I'll second that.
Well, thank you for seconding that. See, I told somebody to keep being lying earlier. Thank you for that. Now, we had a motion made by Mr. Spitz and a second by Mr. Bailey for the resignation of Ashley Ross. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any nays? Seeing none, thank you. I don't think we have any conflicts of interest from anybody. Is there on any agenda items this evening?
None.
None, seeing none. Number six, approval of the minutes from the regular planning commission meeting of 4/28/22.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from 4/28/22.
Second.
We have a motion to approve the minutes from Mr. Hunwig and seconded by Mr. Nold for the regular meeting minutes of 4/28/22. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any nays? Seeing none, minutes have been approved. Are there any public comments for items that are not scheduled on the meeting or the regular agenda for this meeting this evening from the public? Anyone here to speak in regards to anything that's not on this meeting? Seeing none, we're going to move on to unfinished business, which we have no unfinished business. New business is an amendment to the approval of the final site plan for Grace Senior Living, located at 985 North Lapeer Road, and it's an Orion Township address, so Lake Orion, Michigan. And Mr. Fulkerson, are you here to speak in regards to that? If you would start us off, please?
Okay.
Mr. -
David Fulkerson?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, I just like to ask a question real quick before we go. As I discussed earlier, I thought we deferred all of this to Orion Township when we originally-
Not this little portion.
But I thought we did. I thought we gave them control of it.
They're going to tear some plans-
Yeah, for simplicity reasons, so there wasn't any-
They told me you guys had to rule on that. That's what Tammy Durham told me.
Oh, from Orion Township?
Yeah.
Really?
And is it because this piece is conclusive to the fact that it's totally located in Oxford Township?
Totally located in Oxford.
Okay, I think I can understand that.
You guys were involved in the original approval in 2018 for this little bit.
Where the landscaping is located.
Yeah.
Correct, okay. So then, Mr. Fulkerson, would you please present your case?
I apologize for that.
That's fine.
That's a good question.
It is a good question.
Because we were kind of under the assumption of what he made.
So when I first was here, three and a half years ago, I let everybody know that we were going to bring a jewel to the community. I grew up on Drainer Road, went to Oxford High School, and this community is very important to me, to make sure I don't let anybody down. I've already had eight friends and people I've known have residence with us, so it's a personal endeavor. And we're doing great. We won Best Senior Living in the Oxford Leader, we won Best Doorfront and Curb Appeal for the look of it, of our community, so we're grateful that everybody likes our design. During the development process, our proposed sign location, which is in the packet I sent in, this is Manitou Lane, and this is our community, and the sign was supposed to go on the north side of Manitou Lane. The apartments have their sign almost directly where that is. And then the church's sign is just over a few more feet in front of the church. There was nowhere to put our sign in the front because of our retention ponds. So the church ownership and the pastor Vaughn from Seventh-day Adventist and I all got together and tried to figure out a solution. Although it's not ideal, I wanted to be a good neighbor, so we decided to put it on our wall, so it's parallel with Lapeer Road instead of perpendicular, which is obviously not as good when you're driving 55 or 60 miles an hour. But there was really no other alternative that we could come up with, so we had to move that.
Excuse me.
Then, we were going to put in these 13 pine trees, four crab apples, and another tree, I'm not sure of the type, from Lapeer Road all up the north side of Manitou Lane, and that's in the handout as well. So it's just full of trees right here. And they were like, "That's going to do worse than the sign was going to do. Can you please not put them in?" So I said, "Sure." And we didn't put them in. The church was awesome to us during the development process, because all of our contractors had to park there, and there was 20, 30, 40 vehicles a day there. As a thank you, we did resurface and stripe their parking lot to help them, but we've just had a great working relationship with everybody. And the apartments, they were going to come tonight, I don't see the owner, but they wrote a letter. I don't know if you've read it, or I could read it. But we're just asking that you amend the landscape plan so those 18 trees don't have to go in, and we don't impact other businesses during these difficult, especially now, I mean, the inflation's crazy, and we all know church membership nationwide is declining, so they need to get their message out. And there's some representatives from the church that would like to speak tonight, and I don't know what the protocol is or the timing for that, but I'm open to any questions you might have.
Zach, do you want to start right now, before we get too far into this thing because of what may occur this evening?
Yep. Could be planning group, and first, my apologies if I'm extra loopy and for the jeans. I was in Chicago at a fire station design conference this week, and I used up all my fancy pants earlier in the week and not expecting to be here. So my apologies if I am a little loopy and ask the question again. All right, so as described, this is a request for an amendment of a final site plan limited to just the landscaping. It was originally approved in 2018. We're just looking at the portion that's north of the boundary between Oxford and Orion Let's see, landscaping has been installed, but it wasn't consistent with the approved plan. Now, a little bit of egg on our chin is they should not have been allowed to open without the landscaping that the site plan said they're supposed to put in, but that's something we're working on right now. So we're happy that we're looking at trying to get into compliance now. Site plans can be amended with the mutual consent of the applicant and the original approving authority, which on Township Side was a planning commission. The zoning ordinance does have a disclaimer, section 12.7, that basically says, "If you make modifications during construction, that's at your own risk. There's no guarantee that the township will approve those modifications." Section 7.8 of the motion, modifications of landscape requirements, allows the planning commission to modify requirements of landscaping if certain conditions are found to be true, and we'll cover that shortly. No changes to the configuration of the site itself. It is zoned R2, single-family residential. The use, the memory and senior living facility, is considered illegally non-conforming use in that zone, so it can continue to exist, but certain expansions of it in replacement are limited at this time, but they're not proposing any expansions of the facility within Oxford Township Side. Again, no changes to the physical structure itself, no issues with natural resources, no changes to access or circulation, although on the plan that was submitted, it says that the right-of-way was to be recorded, and we call out that that should be confirmed, that the easement has been recorded, and that the site plan should be updated to say, "Here's where the recorded easement for the right-of-way is." No changes to parking. For essential services and utilities, some of the utilities are shown on, but we're not certain that it's all of the utilities, and some of them that are shown there aren't labeled, and that's because this was just a page taken out from a larger packet, and so the legend doesn't say what all the utilities are. And there are certain distances that Mr. Sharp wants things to be away from utilities, and so that's why we want to see those on there, including there's, I believe, some freestanding lights that are shown, but we don't see how the power gets to that. So we want those shown to make sure that the trees aren't planted on top of those lines. Okay, for the landscaping plan, here's the meats and potatoes from the modification. The planning commission can allow modifications of landscape requirements with, here's the text, "In consideration of the overall design and impact of a specific landscape plan, and in consideration of the amount of existing plant material to be retained on the site, the planning commission may modify the specific requirements outlined herein, provided that any such adjustment is in keeping with the intent of this article and ordinance in general. In determining whether a modification is appropriate, the planning commission shall consider whether the following conditions exist." So you have three conditions to determine are true. And it doesn't necessarily say all of them, or two of them, or three of them, so that's kind of to your discretion there. First, or A, topographic features or other unique features on the site create conditions such that strict application of the landscape regulations would result in a less effective screen than an alternative landscape design. B, parking, vehicular circulation, or land use are such that required landscaping would not enhance the site or result in the desired effect. C, the public benefit intended by the landscape regulations could be better achieved with a plan that varies from the strict requirements of the ordinance. So we didn't receive information of how the proposed modifications address those, so we weren't able to speak to them. And the landscape plan doesn't have a list of the required landscaping. So there's normally a schedule that says, "We need this many trees or shrubs for parking lot landscaping, this many for buffering on the side, this many for buffering on the front." We don't have that, so we can't provide guidance for what the actual modifications are. Let's see, the location for all the freestanding signs ought to be shown on the site plan. For modification, you're reviewing it just as if it was a final site plan, so full compliance with all the stuff, but the only thing that's proposed to change is the landscaping. There is, as we mentioned, some of the information isn't on there that we typically see. The title ought to be changed to amended final site plan, or something similar to that. It ought to have the address and legal description, because again, this may disappear off into a file somewhere in the future, and someone needs to figure out what's going on. Confirmation that the Manitou Road easement has been recorded with revisions on the site plan, so consistent with that. And for you guys, the things you need to determine is if a waiver should be granted for the missing information on the site plan, if it's consistent with your decision criteria, and if you want to grant the modifications of the landscaping requirements. We did distribute, at your desk now, a couple of draft motions. My apologies for the tardiness. My computer did not want to connect up the VPN in Chicago. I don't know what's going on, but we do have it there. One potential draft is for postponement, to allow the applicant to provide additional information that you guys may need for your review and the shizzen. The other would be for approval or denial, again, based on what you guys decide. And that's what I've got.
Okay, thank you for that presentation, because that was a little longer than I anticipated.
I'm sorry.
It's quite all right, you put quite a bit into it.
I think you've been here last time.
Yeah, I heard about it. I'm glad I wasn't. I'd like to hear from the planning commission members next in regards to this.
Would the applicant like to answer any of those points?
Well, wait a minute. I want to know if anybody has any concerns from what Zach actually had first, and then I'd like Mr. Fulkerson to then answer, because from what I'm understanding, if we don't have the documentation that we need in front of us at this point, Mr. Fulkerson, to do what we need to do with all the suggestions that I just heard from Zach, we might want to postpone this action on this evening so that we don't continue any further without having the proper documentation in place to make that final decision. So I don't want to sit here and go through all this this evening, and I guess I want to say waste time, but we might want to consider a postponement from the PC in regards to what we might need in front of us to make this approval. So I guess we'll hear from Mr. Fulkerson.
I was kind of going to go down the same path. I would like to hear from the applicant-
Okay, thank you.
-on some of those points, you know, because personally, I'm leaning towards doing it with conditions, assuming that you can get a lot of that documentation done outside of this, versus bringing you back and going back and forth, having another meeting, wasting even more time versus doing it somewhat administratively.
It's fine. I wasn't aware I didn't give all the documentation. I'm new at this, so I did the best I could, I guess. But I'll do whatever he needs, if he needs information on the site-
I just don't want anybody to expedite anything more into this than they have to, and we need to probably get this into the perspective of what we can actually finally approve. And that being said, and I don't know that we can do that administratively, because we are the final site plan approver of this body.
Mr. Chair, that's where I was going to ask Zach. Is there a way that this can be all-encompassing administration through you, or is that putting the burden back on the office when we need to take care of it here?
Well, some of the items certainly can be done administratively, like, did they change the title, did they put utilities on? Some of the things that may be more challenging that are missing on there is, the township ordinances say you need to be 10 feet away from certain utilities. If we're not certain that all the utilities are shown on there, it's difficult to be for certain that the landscaping is the 10 feet back. So some of the items certainly are relatively easy for myself, Mr. Sharp, to check. Some of them, we won't know until it's shown.
Mr. Chair, could I ask another question?
Yes, sir.
In your humble opinion, would it be better if we postponed this, or would it be better if we tried to make this work tonight? I'm trying to help. That's a loaded question, I understand.
Yeah, well, I'll pull this back to you, and I've sat on planning commission's EBA, is, do you have enough information to make an informed decision? If you're comfortable that you can do that, then go ahead and approve it with conditions. If you're not certain, then you may want to postpone and say, "Here are things that we need to be able to make our decision."
All right, go ahead, Mr. Hunwig.
If the applicant was not going to modify the landscaping, we wouldn't be here tonight, right?
Correct.
So all those other issues, how would they be addressed?
Well, the, as I mentioned, the site is not in compliance with what was approved by the township. So if we just happen to be, someone was out there like, "There aren't any of the trees that are supposed to be on here." The action the township would take would be coenforcement. We would send a letter like, "Hey, you got the site plan, you got to plant the trees that you said you were going to plant." So that's another corrective action.
But what about the utility thing you're talking about, the 10 feet?
The presumption is that they would have been installed where the original final site plan was, in that the reviews of where that proposed landscaping, that they were consistent with the 10-foot setbacks.
I think what we lack right now is final documentation to really make an approval this evening. In my opinion, I would rather see all the things that were mentioned earlier described accordingly on a document, that then we have a full document in front of us that we're actually going to make final approval to. I'm not in favor of doing it the way we were talking about with an administrative factor, but because the final site plan came from this body, the planning commission, I am in favor of eliminating some landscaping, because I sat right in the church parking lot today, and I sat there for a while, and I just looked at everything that's going on. I was actually in a parking spot that's right on the north side of the road. I mean, on the north side. Now, that's all on Oxford Township's component when I look at the documents. I looked at the documents again, and I said, "I don't think these trees need to be here. I don't think the landscaping needs to be there." So I'm in favor of your amendment, just so you know that upfront. But I want proper documentation in here for the record-keeping process of what the township needs to make this happen.
I'm trying to understand what utilities along that north side of Manitou Lane aren't on the plan. Jim, everything, all the utilities had to be on the plan before we put them in, and they all got approved.
Utilities were all approved, all the as-bills were approved, I think maybe what Zach is referring to.
This plan doesn't show it.
This, I haven't seen the documents.
Apparently the-
The PEA plan?
The planning and zoning coordinator, I felt that I need not be involved in this review, because I didn't even see the documents until the packet came out. So that's why I don't have a letter.
But all the utilities are on our landscape, on our site plan. Those are all approved and done, so we were told to just do an as-built landscape plan. That's the only thing we amended, so all the utilities he's talking about are already approved and on the, I mean, I can bring the documents in, but they're done. All we're doing is putting in less trees, which would be less impact on utilities, and can they give their side of the story? It's really for them, it's not really for me.
We'll listen to comments this evening, that's what we're here for.
I just want to make sure, from the perspective of our record-keeping process, when we make
this final decision, we have the documentation in place that we put on file.
And you will. It's already on file, and it's not going to change.
Well, it's going to change, because the approved plan that we have right now shows all the documentation of where the trees were going to be.
Just one page of the 25.
And I looked at that one page, I did do that.
That's the only page that's changed.
And I'm not going to, and I certainly don't want an argument beyond that further.
Right, I'm not arguing, I'm just trying to understand. Jim said that makes sense, because he's already approved everything.
If you're taking trees out, we already approved it, from an engineering perspective, they're not in conflict with any of our utilities, so I'm happy.
That's a comment you're making this evening.
Without seeing the plan.
Well, I guess, Mr. Chair, if I may.
Yes.
I was going to go down a similar path. I mean, in that section we're discussing today, you're not putting any landscaping in, no trees, so how would they interfere with any utilities, and why would they be marked?
I'm certainly not saying that there is-
So that's how I understood it, so, I mean, maybe I'm underthinking this and everybody else is overthinking it.
No, you're not underthinking it. I think we're all on a similar page here.
I understand what Zach's asking for, and I completely understand getting the documentation updated, which I'm 150% in favor of. But, you know, we're taking out some trees, and assuming everybody agrees with that, I don't understand what else needs to be done. I don't get it. That's my point.
Ashley, I want to hear from you first, and then I'll make a comment.
I agree wholeheartedly with you, Mr. Spitz, but also, didn't it, forgive me because I wasn't at the last meeting, but weren't we in the process of putting in some sort of pre-review, that this, we would have already cleaned this up and known that ahead of time?
It is sometimes difficult to fully convey what's required.
Okay.
And applicants bring things in, they have the right to go, here, we are looking, the amendments that we proposed that are, we'll address in the update, do say that administrative staff have to say this is administratively complete before it passes go. Those are effective.
We're working on it still, though?
Yes.
Okay, because I just think this is a prime example of something very simple that we could have just taken care of. We have all these approvals, and he just doesn't want to put more trees in, and we all think that's fine, but this is a lot of hoops for him to jump through to-
And I think a lot of the confusion that started this this evening is, we were, a lot of us here, the majority, I think, were under the assumption that this was already settled from the Orion point of view, and now Orion's saying no, because this is in Oxford's Township's jurisdiction, I mean, by legal description of property. But I have no problem with the trees that are removed off, there was 19 total, I believe. And I sat there and I looked at it all today, and I said, "I have no problem with those not going in here right now." And especially for the idea of the church sign and the Manitou apartments and everything else that are all off that road, you know, that private, it's a private road, and I'm for you. I just want to make sure we do it in the proper mechanism, so-
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Couple comments. Number one is, I, being a new member to this committee, asked about another person's plans, and they said, "Oh, they'd be updated when they were final signs off." Now, if that was the process, it doesn't look like we've totally done that with this person's-
Documents.
Documents in final plan. The other thing that we haven't talked about, if we look at the sheet that you gave us, it shows a sign location.
Oh, yeah.
What are we going to do with that sign location? Are you going to put a sign there, or, then that needs to come off the plan?
It did say proposed. I don't know if it was ever voted on that that's where it's going to be.
But a final set of plans shouldn't have any proposals on it. It should be true documentation.
That was probably from a site plan he did early on. I just wanted to show where it was going to go. It wasn't on the approved line.
I also came down today, go back up the road, and I think it's great without the trees. It gives you a good vision of people coming down the southbound side of 24, what that traffic is before you get to the bottom of the hill. So I support that part.
The removal, what do we-
But I think from a township standpoint, we got some work to do to get this documentation up to date and realistic of what's going on. So five years from now, if somebody wants to do something, they got a plan that really reflects what's there and not what somebody thinks is there.
I appreciate your comments. I want to make, before, there might be other people that want to speak here. Zach, the location of the sign that we're talking about right now, who has the approval process on that?
North of the Township Boundary is Oxford Township.
So who has that authority for approval?
So there are a couple of paths. One is if it's included in the site plan, then the site plan approval approves the sign going there, specifications of height, size, those types of things. If the sign isn't shown, then it's administrative review to check for, is it setback, is the height, is the size all good?
So administrative is who?
Zoning administrator.
There you go.
Yep.
You.
Now, the reason why most ordinances and most communities like to have signs shown on site plans is because there are often lots of utilities and landscaping and clear vision zones, and there's a desire to not, there's a desire to show that the sign can actually fit, rather than the site gets designed and approved, and then they come back and we can't put the sign where we are allowed to put the sign, we need to get a variance. So that's generally why most communities want to see the sign shown on the site plan.
But he's removing the sign.
Yeah, as I say, if you show a sign-
But he's taking it away.
... for the eventual development, they show a sign, and then they elect not to put it in, you're not going to tell them to go put it in, are you?
No, but the as-bills ought to reflect that things didn't get built, that they said were going to get built.
And the as-bill does show it, no sign. So it's up. I think we've met all the requirements. Jim said all the utilities are approved and on the plan. One page of these 40 pages of site plan changed, and we've submitted it, and that's as-built, no signs on it and no trees. That's all we're asking for, is that to be approved. It seems to be very complicated, and it seems to be such a simple issue.
Are you open and running?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Oh, yeah. We have a waitlist.
Really? Oh, good for you.
We're full, and we have one member in memory.
Mr. Nold, do you want to make a comment?
I want to help this out as much as everybody else.
Do you want to hear?
We're here tonight only for the 19 trees.
19 trees.
And the sign removal.
And the sign removal. Do we have to approve the sign removal from the site plan?
I think it would be nice if we added it, because then there can never be a discussion later as to whether or not it should- as to whether or not it, it should have gone there.
Yeah.
So I would make that as part of a motion. I think that's where you had it, but I still want to hear if there's comments from the public before we get too much further into this.
You're, you're fine. I'm just trying to clear this up.
Yeah, I got you. Is there anybody from the public that'd like to speak tonight?
Pardon me for hollering up.
That's quite all right.
My name is Charles Hickson. I'm a member of the Seventh Day Adventist Church. I'm a deacon there and one of my responsibilities is to manage the church sign. Uh, I'm the one that makes the changes, I get feedback from wherever it comes from internally, and I make the changes. And what, the reason that we want to support the amendment is because in very quick order, if we put those trees in, there would be blockage, people won't see the sign until they're right angles and it doesn't-
Or even part of the church, maybe. Yeah.
We spent a lot of money to put that sign in, and if the trees go in, it's not going to be as effective. And that, that's my message.
I appreciate your comments, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Mr. Hubbard. Uh, I have been mowing the lawn since nineteen sixty-nine. I don't need any trees to mow around anymore. It's been a lot of trips around that vacant piece of property since nineteen sixty-nine when I started mowing the lawn. Still mowing the lawn, probably will till the last breath, but, uh, just twofold. Really don't need the trees. I, I feel as far as a safety thing, as we drive down, leaving the church, any obstacle to the left is going to hinder, hinder anybody that's leaving, especially down close to the road, so we really truly don't need any trees, never have needed any trees. Uh, we bought that piece of property that you would like to have the trees put on, I think it was in nineteen eighty, from the owner, just because he was going to build a building there. And we offered him more so that we could have it vacant so people could see the church. If there's anything I'd like to take on the north side and eliminate some more trees so people could see the church more, but we just don't really need any trees, so, thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Are there any other comments from the public?
Hello there. Good evening. My name is Kathy Hubbard and I'm a member of the Seventh Day Adventist Church. And I think just out of pure safety, when you leave Manitou Lane to look north with oncoming cars, you don't need trees or any other stuff there to distract your vision. It's enough to make sure that the snow is plowed and back up far enough so the vision is not impaired in any way. And we have to remember, we have apartments that are back there, a subdivision that uses that road, as well as the church membership on one day a week. So I would highly recommend that the trees not be placed just out of safety for our community.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Noel?
I think I've worked through this where I could come up with a, a, a draft resolution for the Planning Commission. You just have to be very patient and bear with me as I work through this, if you would like me to proceed.
I would love it.
Oxford Township Planning Commission Draft Resolution for the amended site plan for Grace Senior Living. A resolution for the amended site plan for an associated living and memory care facility submitted by David Faulkner have been of consensus senior living properties, Grace Senior Living. Where properties located nine eighty-five North Lapeer, section thirty-five of Oxford Township, parcel number zero four three five three zero 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 one nine. Whereas David Fulkerson, applicant, on behalf of the senior, Grace Senior Living pursuant to the provision of the Oxford Township zoning ordinance, submitted an application for amendment as a sign of plat- sign of fight, sign of site plan on April nineteenth, twenty twenty-two. And whereas the applicant submitted a one-page site plan on April nineteenth, twenty twenty-two, with a last revision date of April seventh, twenty twenty-two, prepared and stamped by James L. Evans, a licensed landscape architect. And whereas the Planning Commission has received a report from Zach Michelle, planning consultant dated May thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, whereas the Planning Commission has not received a report from Jim Sharp, engineering consultant. Whereas the Planning Commission has not received a report from Pete Schultz, Oxford Fire Department Chief. Whereas the Planning Commission has re- received a report from Susan Morrison, Township attorney, dated May sixteen, twenty twenty-two. And whereas the property located in an R-two, single-family residential district. And whereas assisted living and memory care facility is considered a legal non-conforming use. And whereas the applicant is not proposing any expansion or relocation of the legal non-conforming use. And whereas the Planning Commission has authorized to approve with conditions or deny amendments of final site plans as provided in one twelve point three C-three, Planning Commission action in twelve point six amendment of approved si- uh, site plans of the zoning ordinance. And whereas the, the Planning Commission has approved the final site plan dated-
We'll, we'll fill in the date.
We'll fill in the date, two thousand eighteen. Whereas the, the Planning Commission, as, as its May twenty-six, twenty twenty meeting, reviewed the applicant for the amended site plan for Grace Center Living and rece- and received public input. And whereas amendments are limited to landscaping change to omit trees, parentheses nineteen, and sign removal. And I'm going to go down to one, section one ninety. Now, therefore be it resolved, the Planning Commission, by a majority vote on a duly noted regular meeting held twenty-sixth of May, approve the amended site plan, Grace Center Living for property located nine eighty-five North Lapeer Road, section thirty-five of Oxford Township, parcel number zero four three five three zero 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 one nine to the applicant and subject to the conditions listed below. A, all utilities shall be shown and labeled on the site plan. B, utilities approved by the township engineer. C, missing landscape information added to the site plan, calculations of required landscaping, deviations from required landscaping, and irrigation systems located in detail. The applicant shall provide a narrative description of how the conditions for modifications are satisfied. Locations of electrical lines to be freestanding, light fixtures stand to, added to the site plan. Title blocks revised to read amendment's final site plan or similar. Address and legal description added to the site plan conforming, uh, confirm-
Confirmation.
Thank you. Confirmation that Manitou Road Eastman has been recorded and the site plan amendment to reflect such. Freestanding signs added to the site plan, the final site plan shall be, shall expire and be of no effect after three hundred and sixty-five days.
Is, are you through?
I believe I'm through.
I had a little trouble.
If it wasn't for this fellow here.
I had a little trouble, uh, towards the end. Does every-
I'll support.
Uh, you're, okay, a motion was made by Mr. Noel and supported by Mr. Spiz.
With a comment.
You have a comment?
I have a comment.
We, let's, are we going, okay, let's-
I'm not going to change anything.
For discussion. Now we can do discussion because the motion's been made and it's been supported, so let's have discussion.
This got a little confusing because we had the irrigation and systems in there. If we take out landscaping, then we don't have to abide by the irrigation rules of the ordinance?
Your zoning ordinance still requires, uh, that required landscape to be irrigated, so if you, if you-
So we got that covered. That's my only question. Thank you.
Okay, I, I did pretty good keeping up with most of it, but I, you know, one thing that I wouldn't mind putting in there, because Mr. Sharp made the comment, um, earlier on about your fourth condition down, whereas the Planning Commission has not received a report from Jim Sharp, but I said however, if we could amend this motion to add, however, uh, Mr. Sharp was in attendance, uh, at this PC meeting dated on five twenty-six twenty-two, and that he did not have any problems with the removal of the trees.
Mr. Chair, I was-
That's putting him in position, which he's made public comment to.
Sure, and I, I would change that for a, a verbal, a verbal review. Change my motion.
I think it's important that, because now we do have techni- uh, technicality and another one covered.
I'll adjust my support.
Support. So we have the amendment adding that-
Touching my spot, I'm okay.
We have that, uh, amendment adding that Mr. Sharp's comment was made publicly and he doesn't have any problems with the removal of the trees. And we have an amended support. Is there any other discussion from the Planning Commission members at this time, and, Mr. Turner?
Uh, item I says a freestanding sign added to the site plan. Shouldn't that say removed from the site plan?
He said item I.
We have the same question at this end of the table, Mr. Chair.
The comment that Mr. Turner just made?
Yes, sir. I look for clarification for-
Sign details corrected.
Pardon me?
Sign details corrected.
Yeah, okay. Modify the, we're going to say, sign details.
I modify my motion for I to say sign details need to be corrected.
Okay, is that, is that suitable, Mr. Turner?
I am on board. However, if you're going to make, now, a second amendment, you're going to have to vote on the second amendment. Then you're going to have to vote on the first amendment, then you're going to have to vote on this original motion.
We got a lot of amendments going here right now, so-
We got two.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Um, it's awkward at this point in time, but let the Planning Commission members finish their discussion because there's, we actually have an original motion, now we have an amended motion, and now we're talking about another amendment.
Of the motion.
Of the motion. So let us do that first because prior proper orders in place here. So, okay, I understood what you said. Mr. Turner was okay with it, but I think Mr. Bailey still has a comment.
No, just the, the thing I pointed out to you, uh, isn't there a large bus stop right at that corner as well?
Yeah, so visibility is very important.
Visibility is a big-
Okay, that's another good comment, okay. I like that, that's a good comment. Um, Susan, I think we have to make, okay, wait a minute. Did, Susan, did you add the second amendment that Mr. Turner made?
Yes.
So we have to vote on that first.
You have to vote to allow that amendment, then you have to vote to allow the first amendment, then you have to vote on the original motion.
Correct. Okay, so I would like a roll call vote on the second amendment.
Is that for the sign?
That's, that's in regards to the sign.
The sign, changing it, I, item I to read that the sign detail is corrected on the plan.
Right. So I would like, uh, a roll call vote in regards to the second amendment to the motion.
Okay. Spiz?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Hunwick?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Who am I missing?
Me. Yes, yes. Okay, I, I understand the motion. Now I would like a roll call vote for the amendment, which was the first amendment to the original motion.
Stating that Mr. Sharp, in attendance at the meeting, verbally provided a review that he has no issue with the removal of the trees.
Correct.
Okay. Turner?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Hunwick?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Spiz?
Yes.
Burger, yes.
I got it, I was ready.
Chairman always goes last.
Now, if you, if we're all caught up, I would like a roll call vote for the original motion that Mr. Noel made and was supported by Mr. Spiz.
As amended second.
As am- no.
Yeah, as amended.
As amended.
As amended, as amended, thank you.
Yes. Okay, are we ready?
Never done this many before.
Bailey?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Hunwick?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Spiz?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Burger?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, all, all the motions and amendments to the motions have all been successfully approved. So that, that eliminates Mr. Fulkerson from this evening's agenda. All right.
Thank you.
Continue to-
Where did my agenda go?
Thank you. Thank you.
Don't take out any more trees.
Leave that sign alone.
Okay, we are still in business and we are in, uh, new business and we're on number B, which is confirmation of the payment in lieu of the safety path for the property located at thirty-six oh-six Thomas Road, Oxford, Michigan. Is there someone here to represent that? Mr. Zach?
I will give the even quicker introduction. Uh, so final site plan was approved by this body a little while ago, and that site plan showed the safety path. The applicant said, hey, I'm really interested in doing the payment in lieu of construction because it's a weird spot. No one's going to use it and every, all the cars are going to drive up on it instead, and everyone kind of nodded and said, yep, we're in support of that. But it wasn't documented in the minutes or the resolution, so we just wanted to tidy up the record. The township engineer has provided a probable cost estimate for construction. Your ordinances say that you can do the waiver of the requirement to construct if you pay that cost. Uh, Township Board is the approving authority with re- recommendation from the Safety Path Committee, which has given a favorable recommendation. So this would be, the Planning Commission gives a favorable recommendation as well. How's that for quick?
That's quick. I don't, do we need, do we need a motion?
Come on, I got a page and a half.
We, we got, do you have a-
Yes, you have to have a motion.
Yes.
We have to have a motion. You got, you don't have a page and a half, Mr. Noel.
It has to be a resolution, can't just be a motion to accept or recommend, simple?
Yeah, yeah.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept recommendation on payment in lieu of the safety path construction for the site, final site plan for JT Electric for property located three six zero six Thomas, west of Thomas, between Lapeer and Second, section four of Oxford Township, parcel zero four zero four one six two zero zero one.
In the amount of twenty-nine thousand.
The amount of twenty-nine thousand seventy dollars.
I'll support.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Noel and we have support by Mr. Spiz. I think we can do a yea and nay on this, can't we, Susan? We don't need a roll call. We're not spending, so, uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Seeing none, motion was approved. Thank you, because I thought that was, after driving up there, I thought that was a good one to put the money in lieu of. We do have another added item, which was the resignation of Ashley Ross. And, uh, the date of her resignation is going to be effective five twenty-seven of twenty-two. This isn't by motion, is it, Susan?
Yes, you have to make a motion.
Oh, my goodness. Motion after motion. I guess I'm looking for a motion for this resignation.
Can we deny, yeah?
Wait, 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 wait. Let's get a motion before any discussion goes on, any further.
I reluctantly to make a motion that we accept Ashley Ross's resignation, effective date five twenty-seven, twenty twenty-two.
Thank you. Support? Oh, don't tell me there's no support.
I support.
Okay. We have a motion made by Mr. Noel, supported by Ashley Ross. Um, okay, that's, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays?
Nay.
Oh, Mr. Hunwick.
Well, aye.
One aye. Okay, motion passes, we have a majority. Uh, are there any communications from the Planning Commission members at this time?
You skipped the reports.
Oh, I did the report? I skipped it?
It's in the same sentence, same.
Oh, or committee reports. I, I'd like to make a comment. Uh, thank you, Ashley, for serving the time that you did with us. I mean, it's, sometimes this is a thankless job. There's not a lot of reward involved in being on the Planning Commission, and I appreciate the idea that you, you took the time and effort and made it here and, and what little was done with us, but, uh, I, I, I certainly hope the best for you and where you're headed in the future, so thanks for coming on board with us, I appreciate it, because we have a hard time trying to fill these voids sometimes. It's not easy in Oxford to do that, so thank you.
I wish I could stay. I apologize. My kids are little and don't understand my mom has to go away all the nights of the week that I-
Yeah.
So I had to pick and choose and I would love to stay and I said I would love to come back at some point, maybe when they're a little older and understand where I'm going.
Well, thank you so much for your time. Bring him here.
I brought him to a few village meetings, it did not go well, so unless Jim wants to babysit, well.
I'm okay with letting him babysit.
Are there any, uh, are there any, uh, committee reports? Has anyone has? Or any other communications that anyone has? Mr. Spiz?
We, uh, we actually had an inaugural meeting back on April thirteenth where Ashley and I met.
For what?
I don't remember what committee it is.
Economic.
Economic committee, economic.
Economic Development, I actually know what that thought I had, yeah. Economic Development, had that discussion, had some tasks, but-
Economic Development. Had that discussion, had some tasks, but we were supposed to meet again this evening, but, uh, Mr. Hunwick and I did not attend. Under, under the premise that I knew Ashley was resigning, so, until we get a third member. We need to figure out what we're gonna do with the Economic Development Committee.
We do need to figure that out, but you didn't know that she was resigning because you didn't have it on the agenda.
No, but I saw the emails.
Oh, okay.
I did have, um, communications and I forgive, I forget the name of the person here about website. So we were talking about adding some stuff to the township website. A landing page for kind of what we're doing.
Oh.
We did have, we did start that conversation. Um, I just, I didn't have the bandwidth to pull it all together. So. That's there. They know it's coming. So when we are ready for it, we can move forward pretty easily.
Yep. So maybe Ed and I can, uh, carry the torch going forward. Until we get a third member and a replacement.
Are there any other communications or reports that someone wants to comment on? Seeing none, let's move on to planner or engineers reports. Mr. Sharp, do you have any reports that you'd like to make tonight or comments? You just wanna get up and speak?
Guess so.
I don't know.
Put me on the spot like that for silent fight plan or whatever it was. I don't know, Mr. Knowles. Hey, um, maybe you've seen now in the community, there's some safety path repairs that are going on, some on Drainer Road, some on Marcus Street, Waterstone, Seymour Lake. So those should be wrapping up pretty quickly. They moved on, once they got going, they, uh, they moved along pretty quickly. We did some handicap ramps. We did some, uh, you know, areas where there's cracks in the pavement. Uh, we overlaid the entire length of, uh, Drainer Road in front of the elementary school and so forth. So, that was, uh, you know, it seems, so far it seems like the project's gone pretty well. Um.
So you have some asphalt and some concrete? Isn't that what I saw? Kind of a mix up?
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, well, a few years ago, we tried, you know, sometimes on, if you guys, uh, walk the pathways. Uh, you'll see that you get some of these cracks that are like maybe two, three, four inches wide. And you can't, we tried it before where you go in there with asphalt and cut out a small area and try to patch it in. And all we did is we just created two cracks.
Yep.
And a hump in the middle. Whoops, excuse me. Um, so this time we tried it, something a little bit different and we tried it with a concrete repair to try to get it level. We're gonna see how that works. We tried a couple of areas with different thicknesses of concrete, different whists to see what works and what doesn't.
Okay.
Kind of interested to see what happens.
I was kinda looking at how it was going together. I was, I was gonna drive the community enough, so I saw it.
First time around, it didn't go so well. I mean, trying to repair a little two-foot area or something and it doesn't make sense to repair fifty feet of path when you just have a couple cracks. So we're trying to be cost effective over the whole deal. So we're trying a couple different things and we're gonna monitor it and see how those work out, um, for future. But anyway, that, that, that project's been going along pretty well and, uh, they're gonna wrap up the majority of it, I think tomorrow. Uh, there might be a little bit left over for.
All rain delays?
But, uh, they had a couple of days where they were able to do some tear out, but not some pouring. They actually got the concrete down today before the heavy rain came. So I'm hoping everything was, was good, but we'll see.
Pretty good downpour.
When they take all the, uh, the plastic.
Plastic off, yeah.
See how it looks. Um, there's plenty of home building going on in the Westlake area. You've got the development still going in, the Enclaves and Tullamore still going pretty strong. That Manitowoc Hills project, we had a pre-construction meeting. They were gonna start clearing some trees over there, get their soil erosion fence up. And then, uh, that was supposed to happen about three weeks ago and they lost their tree guy to another project or something. So they're kind of on hold right now, but it will be starting.
For clearing?
For, for the clearing aspects of it. But after that, then they had to.
What do you have in there? About thirty plus units?
In Manitowoc Hills?
Yeah.
Only eighteen.
Oh, eighteen, that's what it was. I think they proposed, proposed something earlier with so many more of it. Eighteen, we ended up with eighteen altogether.
Back when.
The one off of Dakota right there, right?
Yes. So, um.
It seemed like it was so long ago, I almost forgot about it.
Yeah, well.
I know.
Took a while getting their permits and they gotta get contractors on board. They thought they had one and then he ended up not showing up. But that project should be starting soon. Other than that, we haven't really seen any new developments, um, come back in, you know, as far as Sanctuary Hills, they're still waiting on uh, report back from the road commission. They submitted their traffic report to the road commission. They're waiting on that back, I heard. So there'll be a few that come through here soon, but, uh, you know, as to exactly when, I'm not sure.
Okay. Have you been up in the new manners of Westlake, uh, today? With all the rain that we have? Um. They're under about sixteen inches of water in a couple of different areas of the road. It did it this winter and then froze right over. Um, but I mean, it's up over the curb, up into the.
Cause of those catch basin filters that are out there.
Yeah, that's what's causing it. I told Mr. London today, they need to just let that drainage go. If they could, you know, a- and then they have to replace the, uh, the filter. Because it, the water's pretty deep from what I heard.
And, and a lot of them are already cut around where they are draining, but.
Yeah, it's a double-edged sword because we make them put the filters on so that the sediment doesn't get into the storm system.
You got Eagle on one side and us on the other.
But then when you get a heavy rain like that, yeah, everything builds up and so forth, you know, and they're, the roads are muddy as heck. I mean, I can't tell you how many violations we've, uh, issued to the properties in Westlake and up in Willow Lake also over the years. There seems to be one developer that seems to be a perpetual perpetrator of that.
Yeah, I suppose we mentioned.
I think there's more than one.
Maybe there are a couple, but there seems, there's one that I'm aware of and we, we stay on top of it. You know, we issued the violations. Um, we're working with Mr. London actually in the building department to put more teeth into it because the fine is a hundred dollars and in the whole scheme of things, you know, when they're building homes, if you hit them up with a hundred dollars, I mean.
Keep your hall future permits until.
Yeah. So we're trying to come up with some different, you know, uh, some different ideas, maybe some stop work orders or something like that. That'll get their attention real fast.
I happened to be in Mr. London's office when Brendan was talking to Mr. London and they're talking about stop work orders. They're gonna pull some attention out if they're gonna keep going the way they're going. And they were pretty staunch about it. So I think they're on the right idea to maybe do some enforcement. I know Mr. London had interviews starting today with some enforcement people. So he had some people coming today. He has some other interviews tomorrow. Uh, for enforcement, cause he needs to hire someone in enforcement. So we are moving in, I think, the right direction. And he's on track with your firm, you know, with Brendan now. So it was nice meeting him. It was the first time I had met the young man. It seemed like he was, uh, doing a good job.
Okay, great.
Yeah, thanks.
Glad to hear that. But yeah, Corey, we'll, uh, you know, like I say, it's, we'll try to balance that out and see what happens, um, with it. I don't know what the other options are other than to have them, I mean, realistically, what they should be doing is that, that material is meant to, to allow the water to come through and stop the sediment. Well, what happens is the sediment all rushes to there. And then it plugs it up. So really what needs to happen is those guys need to go out there and, yeah, scrape it off or suck it out or whatever it is. And then we shouldn't have that problem and it's just inherent when you have, especially a newer development. I mean, there's not a lick of grass in there yet.
Okay, it's twenty-two.
So.
Yeah, that's what it is. It's.
I appreciate your comments and we'll keep an eye on it.
Do you have anything, uh, Zach, you want?
Yeah, I can say some things. So I also have worked in communities where there were perpetual offenders with not putting up silt fence and they couldn't find anyone who had a street cleaner and, and it didn't happen. So the way we fixed that was we worked into the development agreement that you shall run the street sweeper once a week or on demand. And we had provisions in there that if they didn't, we could pause the whole development. Everyone drops your hammers and goes home. Um, and we didn't have any problems after that. Um, and the development agreement is one of the things in the package of amendments that's going on. The update on that is the marijuana things are going to the township board for second reading in June here. The other ones are in a bit of purgatory, waiting to cross the river Styx. Um, the township attorneys have identified a whole bunch of things from their perspective. Um, I'll let them speak on their own. Some of them are not necessarily planning legal issues, but more policy issues, but we have a meeting to try to get that sorted out. So uh, if there are major changes, it'll probably come back to this body. If it's just minor, it was approved with, you know, the, the planner and the, the attorney are gonna sort out some of the rough spots. If it seems like the rough spots are really big, again, we'll bring it back here for you guys to look at, but I won't do the full adventure, just the, the details on what we've changed. Um, ZBA is gonna hear a couple of cases, uh, driveway up north. Uh, I forget what the other one is, but there, there are a couple of them coming up, so they'll have to fire up the bat signal and get together after a little while. Um, do, do, do. Just to, well, my, my little advice for the day is if you have property and you're trying to do something that requires a site plan. Hire somebody who has a fancy stamp. It seems expensive, but it'll be a lot easier because the person with the fancy stamp will be able to understand what you're telling them. And it'll end up costing you less in the long run.
It's actually not that much. Kennedy's doing the lot I have and I think all in, I'm less than two grand.
Yep.
Are you going forward now?
I wanted to have the property surveyed anyway.
But we, we do try to work with folks, but it, it can be very challenging when you're speaking English and they know German.
Yeah.
That's all. Thank you, guys.
Or Hispanic or something, okay. Um, okay, no other reports? Are there any commissioners' comments or comments from the building official or zoning administrator or anybody else regarding anything? Do we have any more comments? Ashley?
I do. I just wanna say thank you all. I'm sorry my time was short, but I really enjoyed this.
Yeah.
I'm sure you're all here. I like this kind of stuff, so I'm sure you all do too.
Yeah.
I wish I could stay, but thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you for your comment. Anybody else? Oh, good. Seeing none, we can go to adjournment. Eight o'clock on the nose, man. Look at that. Eight P M.